Good evening and welcome to the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty school committee meeting. Mrs. Dixie is not here, so Mrs. Burns will be taking our notes for us. Thank you for roll call. Everyone is in attendance except for David Rag- David Ragsdale, and we would like to extend our deepest sympathies to David and his family on the recent loss of his father. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have some approval of items by consensus. Approval of minutes, August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mrs. Newhouse. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have some warrants, G four zero-two, R two zero-four, L zero-five, L zero-six, zero-seven, zero-eight, zero-nine, and F S O four. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Finley, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is unanimous. Warrant C B O one. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is two abstentions. Mrs. Burns, do you have that? We have C F O three, C F O four, C F O five. Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Finley. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have the second reading of M A S C Sample Policy, E B C F A Face Coverings and Sample Mask Handbook Language, Student Health and Safety, Wearing of Masks, Face Coverings. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Bjork. Thank you, Mr. Finley. Is there discussion? All right, all in favor of accepting those? That is unanimous. Thank you. Next, we have our superintendent's report. That is the two thousand and twenty Lunch Waiver Food Services. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. Just one item specifically under the superintendent's report this evening in your packet. You'll find it under number four A, and this is a memo from Ms. Mary Palin regarding donation for school, uh, school meal debt. And this is a recent announcement by the USDA, and across the country, they have extended waivers to allow the summer program, Summer Food Services Program, which, as you know, has been tremendously successful in many communities, certainly here in Wilmington. And so this provides an overview of their approach that they're taking and how the support will continue ultimately for the child nutrition programs going forward. This will take place for, and span rather, the entire two thousand and twenty, twenty-one school year. So we are part of the program and to date, as you'll note in the memo and from members of the community, our food services has provided over a hundred and seventy-five thousand meals to our community members. And so we've done this before, but to take this opportunity again to give a huge shout out to Mary and her staff for their continuous support of our families in Wilmington.
If I can update, it's actually over a hundred and ninety-five thousand meals as of today.
Thank you, Mary Palin. Yeah, yes, sorry. Go ahead, Mrs. Newhouse.
I just wanted to make a comment that I was reached out, I got a family reach out to me yesterday wanting to thank us very much for this program, that if it weren't for this program, they weren't sure how they were going to feed their kids through all of this, and it really meant a lot to their family. So it was nice to hear from them, and I'm glad that we're able to do this for our kids.
Thank you. Mr. Finley?
So I would echo that. I've heard similar feedback from the community. Also, wanted to extend a thank you to Mary and her staff for the great work. Dr. Brand, I don't know if you know the answer to this question, but it's been on a particular schedule the last couple of weeks, Tuesdays and Thursdays, if I'm not mistaken. Is that going to be the schedule moving forward? Do you know if there's discussion about changing it or keeping it the same?
I'll let, if I may, Paul, because you've had some discussions with Mary at this point.
We can get that in a reporter. She's been communicating with families. I'm not, to be honest with you, exactly sure how it's going to work for the next couple of weeks while we're remote, but I assume it'd be similar to what we're doing now, but I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the committee? No? Thank you again, Mary Palin and her staff. All right, item five is old business. There is no old business. Item six, public comments. So I will read through this, and then I just have a couple of comments to make prior to the actual public comment, and then we've done what we did last time, we've broken up the public comments by committee member, so that you get to hear a couple of different voices at that time. If you are on Zoom and you are here to make your comment sort of in person, as in person as we can be at this time, then Mr. Lord is overseeing that, and so he will just let us know if you are actually live with us. So we are actually, we are streaming live from Wilmington High School. Thank you again, W C T V, for making this work. We asked community members to submit a comment, but to watch the meeting live stream on W C T V or on Comcast, Channel twenty-two Verizon, Channel thirty-eight. You are provided with the Zoom link if you wish to make your public comment live during the September fifteenth school committee meeting. At the time of public comment, I will call each participant's name in the order of their comment submission, and we, I will, we will make, you'll make your comment, you'll unmute, you'll be unmuted to make your comment. If you submitted your comment in writing, other committee members will read your name and address and your full comment in this meeting. And I think that is it. I've gotten a couple of questions. I'm not sure if the rest of you have. It's so nice to look around and see you all. I'm just going to stop and say that, um, about not answering questions during public comment. And so I just wanted to, I know we've said this a couple of times, and I think people are getting a little frustrated that we're saying it's actually not a question and answer. So I just wanted to provide just a bit more clarity, I hope, around this. So public comment is the public's opportunity to make a comment, usually on something that happens to be on our agenda. And so in the past, before COVID, before we had this incredible amount of participation, which we really, really do, we're excited about and we love it, usually when people commented, they commented on something specific on the agenda, so that the committee members would hear your perspective, and then that would help us to make decisions coming up in our agenda to maybe for a vote. So if we're voting on something, you make your public comment about something on the agenda, we hear it, and then as we're making our vote, we, you're right, everything? We, um, we then will take that information to make our decision. So public comment like this is actually not different. We're hearing you, we're listening, it is helping us to then talk with Dr. Brand and the administration about the way, positions and how to move and all of that. However, it is not an opportunity for us to answer questions, frankly, because I'm not sure we would know all the answers to those questions. And so, and also, we would probably be here for a very, very long time. And so if we were to have a Q and A, we might call that a hearing, Mr. Bjork, is that right? A public hearing? We might have an open forum, maybe that would be led by Dr. Brand and Christine Elliott, and maybe some of the administrators. And so that is something that I will definitely recommend this evening, and I think we've mentioned it a few times in the past about having some kind of a forum where parents could actually be there via Zoom, ask a question and get a response. Public comment again is an opportunity for you to comment on something on the agenda so that your committee members, your representatives, can then take that information to help us make decisions in the best interest of children in Wilmington. So let me start there, because I really, I don't know that people are a little bit frustrated, and I wanted to make sure that we clarify that as best we can. I don't know if any other committee members want to add anything to that?
I think you covered it very nicely.
All right. So moving right along, you have three minutes to make your comment. I do have three names of people I think are on Zoom, and so, Mr. Lord, you'll just have to correct me if I'm wrong. Number one submission is Carrie St. Ange, forty-six Hopkins Street. Okay, you're not seeing that? Okay. Number two, Melissa Plowman, one fifty-three Main Street. Great. So will you unmute her?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Melissa Plowman, one fifty-three Main Street. Um, at the, at the time of my previous comment, it was seventeen hours prior to the first day of school tomorrow. My eighth grade student had received instructions for what to do tomorrow from one teacher, one out of seven, seventeen hours before she is expected to show up and do what is expected of her. She has provided guidance. I'm sorry, it's just not sufficient. I'd like to ask the district, what happened to our prioritization of the social emotional needs of students and families? What happened to the hours of conversation and planning and accessing of resources intended to make kids feel safe physically and emotionally upon returning to school? What happened to our commitment to ensuring we were meeting the needs of kids in this town? And I'm not talking about being in school or remote, it's about preparedness. That's what kids need to feel safe. I was on the S E L reopening committee in early July, and at that time, I was super proud of Wilmington. We were weeks ahead of districts all around us. I know because I consult to them. I'm so confused right now. How did we fall so far behind? I'm delighted that conversations with the union have not been contentious and they've been productive, but frankly, hearing that is frustrating more than anything, because we as parents don't get to know what those conversations are happening behind closed doors, which I think we do need to examine. We aren't privy to these productive negotiations, so frankly, it's not really possible to feel reassured or hopeful. Honestly, it feels super frantic and scattered right now, and I am certain that is not emotionally supportive to our children. Listen, everyone wants someone to blame. Frankly, I don't find that helpful. What I want isn't blame, what I want is transparency. What I know children need is concrete, specific direction. They need predictability, they need routine and structure and reassurance that the adults leading them have it figured out. Sure, we can use this moment in time to teach adaptability, flexibility, build resilience. I've been preaching that, but I ask you now, is it really fair at this point to expect this from our children? Is it reasonable to ask children to continue to be patient? Is it even fair to continue to expect parents to be patient? I hate the teacher bashing that has unfolded over this past month. I hate it. It saddens me to no end. But asking parents to trust a process that we know essentially nothing about seems equally wrong to me. We need honesty and communication that is actually informative and specific, so we can parent our children respectively in a way that is conducive to child development. At this point, I don't care if we stay remote or we go back, I just want to know what to expect. None of us can tolerate these last minute changes, especially our kids. Controlling what we control, can control, is a significant coping strategy. Being able to plan and schedule our lives gives us a sense of control. We need this now. I want to end by saying that if we do end up full remote for the year or however long, the district has to provide Cohorts A and B the same exact learning model as Cohort C with synchronous learning every single day of the week in the name of equity and inclusion. And I would appreciate it if that concern is somehow, in some way, addressed at some point in this evening's meeting, and I do truly want to thank Dr. Brand and the school committee and all of our teachers for their ongoing efforts.
It's a Plowman. Next on my list, I have Ron Jordan, six Pilling Road. Nope. Okay. All right, so that's going to bring us to Jesse Finley. You ready? Okay.
We apologize in advance if I butcher anybody's name. So number one is Sinny N. Palos, four Quail Run Road. I am a parent of third grader at Woburn Street and also a physician who has been seeing patients with proper P E, P P E. I think children belong in school, and it is unfair for the parents who have to work outside the house and essential workers to have to spend, to have to send their children to daycare and pay for it and have their kids get exposed to kids from multiple communities rather than go to school and stay within their cohort group with precautions. It doesn't make sense to limit schools yet have pubs, restaurants open. If space is an issue, my suggestion is to have the upper school students, eighth through twelfth grade, do remote as they are older, independent, and able to stay home without parental supervision, and use those spaces as an, as additional rooms for younger elementary school students. Essentially, the entire high school could have been used to house middle school students while the middle schools could have been used for elementary students while subdividing the spaces with plastic walls and so forth. With millions of dollars allocated to public schools, this money could have been used for additional staffing in these subdivided, smaller cohort classrooms instead of using hybrid model as it is now. In countries like China and India, they are able to construct hospital buildings in weeks. Why were we not able to find building spaces or construct temporary spaces to have children in instead of keeping them at home? Parents' voices were not heard as a majority of parents wanted in-person learning. There should always be a choice of remote learning option for those who chose that, because each and every circumstance is different, and there may be households who have at-risk individuals at home with the kids, and those kids definitely should not be sent to school. Thank you for listening. Sincerely, Sinny Palos, D O F A A F P, Family Physician, Clinical Assistant Professor, Tufts University School of Medicine. Number two, Jennifer Jackson, ten Apple Tree Lane. Well, this is a difficult time for everyone, children, families, educators, and administration alike. It is misguided and unfair to place so much blame and anger on the administration of the Wilmington Public Schools, the W T A, teachers, and building leadership. There are teachers in our district who are immunocompromised, there are teachers who have survived cancer, and others who have elderly parents or newborns in their homes. This is difficult for everyone involved, and everyone is trying to metaphorically assemble the plane as it flies. Every single educator I know cares deeply for our children and wants what's best for them. So please, when you are tempted to place blame at the feet of teachers and administrators, remember, the situation is the result of the abject failure of the federal government to act during a global health crisis. It is the malevolent incompetence of the Trump administration that has prolonged this chaos, and it is they who have failed our children. The teachers in this district I have worked with are professional, kind, and profoundly concerned with the welfare of our kids. As parents, we need to hold space and grace for their well-being too. Number three, Natalie Madonka, one twenty-six Marion Street. Since the year is starting remote, will Cohort C be added into the other cohorts? Number four, Kyle Bishop, five Colonial Drive. Excuse me. From the superintendent's email a week before school is set to start, quote, "The town and schools recently commissioned an independent engineering firm for the assessment of the H V A C systems of our eight schools, and the report was delivered on September four. The assessments deemed all buildings safe to occupy but identified recommendations for the optimization of our systems during a pandemic," end quote. Why did we wait so long to test? Testing should have been done in April. And if they were deemed safe to occupy, what is the issue? Why can't the high school kids go back with their new H V A C? Number five, Becky Provost, seven Tacoma Drive. If school is now to remain remote until mid-October, the classes should be live-taught five days a week for all three cohorts. This should be the model until we are able to fully move into the hybrid model. The students do not need days at home without direct instruction. This may not work completely for all grade levels, but this is very important for the high school. Number six, Brendan Mallon, forty-two Adams Street. I want to say I am extremely disappointed in the superintendent and the school committee. As a community, we should really be re-looking at those we have elected to make decisions that impact the long-term learning of our children. We have been let down and dragged down a political path with weak decisions being made last minute that are made using mostly baseless information and the opposite of CDC recommendations. I have yet to hear the school committee mention anything on mental health, healthy eating, getting outside in the sun where COVID nineteen is killed, or how kids can build their immune systems, all leading mechanisms in the fight against COVID nineteen. In addition, spring and summer was wasted by those in charge, with more groups, committees, and teams collecting data but not following through with any decisions or plans. There is absolutely no excuse on why we did not have a plan created, approved, and in process by the end of June. The private sector has had no issues turning their plans around in record time, excuse me, but the public sector just talks and talks and spends and spends but does not make any decisions until it's too late. They're waiting to follow others rather than leading the charge. Lastly, we hired and spent more money on an engineering firm to review our H V A C systems, even though the CDC and every major virus authority has stated that HEPA filters are not really a good line of defense against COVID nineteen. It's sad that our town custodial department does not know what filters go into our H V A C systems. You do not need an engineer to figure this out. And even though the report says everything is okay to open, we instead delay the start anyway to add portable HEPA filter recommendations, not requirements, that are not really an effective line of defense since the main spread of the virus is close contact, person to person. Lastly, while all of this is going on, we ignore the mental health impact that excessive screen time has on our kids. While suicide in teens continues to dramatically rise, our committee cares only about trying to cover themselves crossing off political items from the COVID nineteen list while ignoring the ones that actually have a true impact. Remote learning in no way is supported by any leading authority as an effective way to teach young children, especially K through six. Number seven, Carrie Ann Barry, nineteen Glendale Circle. I am disappointed to learn that the hybrid model will be further delayed, but I am glad that remote learning will still continue on September sixteenth. I would like to request that during any period of learning from home, my children receive the plans the night before. This will alleviate some of the stress involved with preparing for these challenging days, especially for those of us that start our workdays early. I appreciate your consideration of this request, and thank you for all that you are doing to try to get our, excuse me, for all that you are doing to try and get our children back in school. I am well aware of the work that is involved, and thank the teachers for doing their best to further the education of our children at this challenging time. Number eight, Todd Diamond, fifty-two R. Butters Row. What was the point of all the senseless surveys we completed if the results never mattered? So that we could all be strung along until we were out of options? I have no issue with remote learning if the teachers actually teach. What happened in the spring was an absolute travesty. COVID and Zoom eliminated lesson plans and actual grades. The kids deserve better. John Gorham, five Longview Road. Members of this community are presently working in healthcare, elder care, childcare, trades, first responder roles, manufacturing, food service, and other capacities that bring them into close contact with possible COVID-positive individuals on a daily basis. Yet, COVID-related illness today and for the past several months remains almost non-existent in Wilmington and surrounding communities. Wilmington has a, quote, "green" rating from the state D P H, as does every bordering community. Local hospitals have almost no COVID patients. The positivity rate here is as low as anyone could ever have hoped for. Please either return to full in-person or hybrid learning as medical professionals are recommending and as other communities have opted to do, or let us educate our children as best we can without your help and furlough the teaching staff and support staff until January fourth. Thank you for your time. Number ten, Handy Tuncker, five Longview Road. As a physician, educator, and mother of a child in the Wilmington school system, I am disgusted that my daughter has not been in a classroom since mid-March two thousand and twenty. When this virus was raging, hospitals were beyond capacity, and nobody knew the virus's potential or had proper P P E. Members of this community served teachers and teachers' families as food service employees, medical and hospital staff, tradespeople, first responders, elder care employees, and in many other roles with no guarantees of their safety at work. Now, with the hospitals nearly empty and the virus at levels almost undetectable in the community, the teachers refused to play their part, even with a reduced student density and all of the protections we have learned to make work. The schools muddled through a shortened spring semester. While teachers were home benefiting from their nine-month work cycle, we all worked. Then the teachers' union declared a, quote, "great victory," end quote, by winning a delay of ten fewer workdays to allow for, quote, "preparations and negotiations," end quote. It is obvious to everyone that the teachers' delay in returning to a hybrid learning environment is not based on real science. Teachers and the administrators that bow to their crazy demands are quickly losing the respect of a community that took much greater risks than they are being asked to take now. Either furlough the school staff or provide a real education. Stop this nonsense. Handy H. Tuncker, M.D., hematologist, oncologist, assistant clinical professor of medicine, Tufts University School of Medicine, cancer care associates, Lowell General Hospital.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. Mrs. Newhouse?
Michael Longdale, one Beach Street. My wife and I are devastated, frustrated, and disappointed. Neighboring towns have begun the school year. Burlington is operating almost completely full-time. How have they been able to do this while Wilmington seemingly has no plans? As I am writing this, it is five days before school starts, and I have little information about what will happen. I want my children in school. The correspondence from Superintendent Brand was nothing short of depressing. He provided three reasons why the school is delayed. Staffing and W T A negotiations should not be impeding my children's education. The third issue of air quality determined the buildings were safe, but made recommendations for winter months. None of this should be keeping my children out of school. I know obviously this is an unprecedented situation, but we deserve better. Jennifer Picard, three Foley Farm Road. I'm wildly disappointed at how we landed here with another delay to bring our kids to school in a hybrid model. How will we ever plan to bring them back full-time when we can't get it together enough to even get them in the building two days a week? This delay is yet another attempt at running the clock into flu season to try to sway the data to support continued full remote of our children's expense, at our children's expense. Those recommended air filters will hopefully be here before October, but please tell me, what is your plan to staff all these levels of absence? It's certainly not reflected in the six-job posts to fill these vacancies, which to me means that even if you have the coveted air filters, you will still have a major staffing issue with teachers on leave inevitably setting us up for another delay. The plan has always been to let the data drive the decisions. The data reflects the kids are safe to be in school with precautions. Outbreak is minimal, and that, a high percentage of parents want them back, but somehow, we're still failing to execute a plan to bring them into the buildings. These decisions are tearing the community apart. They are pitting parents against teachers, they are making our faith in the W P S clounder while we seek out better opportunities for our kids. Our educators, who were held with the highest regard in the spring, are being blatantly criticized through social media. It's a really unfair situation for most involved, and I'm guessing just about everyone is frustrated. I know this isn't easy, but my expectations are higher, and my children deserve a better education than what they are being offered through W P S. Angela Zychkoskaya, six Summer Street. Good evening, everyone. I have multiple concerns. School guidelines, they're draconian. According to the CDC published on August twenty-sixth, only six percent of COVID flu deaths were directly caused by COVID, the rest by two to three other health conditions. That's ten thousand three hundred, mostly elders, deaths in U, in the, in U.S. That's less than deaths from flu every year. Why do we call it pandemic? H T T P S, uh, W W W dot C D C dot gov slash N C H S slash N V S S slash V S R R slash COVID Weekly Index. Are there any sick people in Wilmington? Did anyone die in Wilmington from COVID flu? The answer is no. So why are you call it a pandemic? The answer is no, so why are you call it a pandemic? Why students, our children, have to wear masks and walk in lines in school hallways? Is that a prison or concentration camp? Do you know that children, high school students, do not want to attend school due to the draconian measures? They refuse to be prisoners. Children have been hanging out in groups of at least five people throughout the summer, driving, all five in one car, of course, without masks. No one got sick, no one died, pandemic. Masks cannot protect from something that is not there, but masks can cause harm. According to many reputable doctors and professionals like MIT PhD Dr. Shiver-Erduray, prolonged wearing of masks deprives body of adequate oxygen supply, compromises immune system simply by inhaling back carbon monoxide that we exhale and not be able to exchange bacterias with other members of our society. And today, I found out that students on the truck team or cross-country have to wear masks during running outdoors. That is insane. You want our children to die? Here's a quote from CDC. Quote, "People who are engaged in highly, in high-intensity activities like running may not be able to wear a mask if it causes difficulty breathing. If unable to wear a mask, consider conducting the activity in a location with greater ventilation and air exchange, for instance, outdoors versus indoors, and where it is possible to maintain physical distance from others," end quote. I insist that the director of athletics runs 5K at the first meet wearing a mask. In May, you sent an email about possible reopening of schools in Wilmington, and you were relying on China, Germany, Italy experience, which was ridiculous. Now in Germany, open investigation into the fake pandemic. RT-PCR testing for COVID is not valid because it only amplifies the, amplifies and multiplies generic material. Because of multiplication tests, tests could be positive. People do the research. Why private schools are open but not our school? Why our children are treated differently? All private schools are open. Austin Prep in Reading is open. What kind of credentials, experience, and expertise teachers of WHS have in online education versus reputable online schools that been on the market for decades? I'm really concerned about quality of online education in WPS. You are supposed to protect our children, but those with draconian measures, you treat them like prisoners? We are not in China. Links to the websites, excuse me, and articles are available, please contact me. Thank you.
Newhouse, I think I'm going to go through 15, and then if anyone's on the phone, we'll have to make their comment, and then I think we should wait till the end. I think community members would like to hear the update, and then we can come back to the public comment at the end. Does that seem reasonable to everybody?
Sure.
Okay. All right.
Laura Hearn, 49 Ashwood Ave. We have always been loud and proud to be part of the Wilmington Public School System. My comments are primarily addressed to the teachers' union. Shame on you for getting your political agenda in the way of our children's education. In addition, putting your valuable asset, your teachers, right in the middle of all this and in a horrible position. School closure disrupts the delivery of in-person instruction and critical services to the children and families, which has negative individual and societal ramifications. The best available evidence from other states and countries that have opened schools indicates that COVID-19 poses low risk to school-aged children, at least in areas with low community transmission like Wilmington, and suggests that children are unlikely to be major drivers to the spread of the virus. Reopening schools creates opportunity to invest in the education, well-being, and future of one of our greatest assets, our children. While taking every viable precaution to protect students, teachers, staff, and all their families, Dr. Brand in the school committee, please don't stop fighting for our children while they are pushing their own political agenda. To our knowledge, most teachers want back to school. Support our children and our teachers to get them back to the classroom. Sincerely, Chris and Laura Hearn. Kelly Sullivan, Teacher West Intermediate School. I will begin by saying this is an impossible situation for parents, students, WPS staff members, and administration. I don't think we could have imagined this outcome when we left our professional development on March 11th. I choose to review, I choose to view the remote learning experience that we had to embrace in the spring as a learning opportunity and as well as a bonding experience with my children, with my students and their families. During those months, I saw my students through a different lens, and I will never fully be able to explain to them how deeply proud I am for their patience and resiliency. I was born and raised a Wilmington Wildcat. I remember every teacher I had from the Reuben Street to WHS. I wear blue and white proudly. I began my career in Wilmington at the West in 2011 as we were forced to face 9/11 with heavy hearts, ensuring that our students never wavered, knowing they were safe with us. Now, as I enter my 20th year, we are facing a pandemic, and our roles remain the same. Ensure our students never doubt that we are here and they are safe. The biggest difference is this pandemic is causing division rather than unity. While I attempt to stay off social media, it is a constant source of information, good or bad. As a teacher, the word disheartened doesn't cover my feelings about the posts I have read. As a parent myself, I understand the frustration and the need to vent, but there are ways to do this without tearing apart individuals who truly love their students, their colleagues, and their profession. As a lifetime Wildcat, it is devastating to see the powers of social media and their lack of reflection when those words are so easily posted behind a screen. There is a large population of parents who have ferociously supported their children's teachers, and that does not go unnoticed, but at the end of the day, while my colleagues, who are my second family, have spent months worrying, planning, overanalyzing hypotheticals, and hoping we can just be with our students again, those negative words tear us apart. I carry them with me, as do many others, and I would be remiss if I did not take the opportunity to make my voice heard in a respectful manner. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that Brendan Mallon is on Zoom. Mr. Mallon, we already made your comment, but if he would like to unmute and state his comment again, that's fine. If anybody else is on Zoom and has a comment to make, please raise your hand on Zoom, and we will make sure you can make your comment before we move on to new business. Yep. Okay. All right, is there anyone else raising their hand on Zoom? Okay. Thank you, Wilmington. Sorry, we're just figuring this all out, so it's a little, okay. All right, so we will come back to, that was comment 15. So we'll come back to 16 through 40 after new business. I think that makes good sense. Okay. So, new business, the school reopening update, Dr. Brand.
Sure. Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. This presentation is not posted yet as part of the school committee packet, but it will, it will be in the coming days. And hopefully, the community is certainly gathering a sense that we're, we're not trying to be negligent in posting these materials as part of the committee packets, but things are just happening so fluidly and so much is going on that unfortunately, these times also are compressing upon the ability to get things posted in the, in the normal manner that we would. It has been quite a last five days or so for everyone in our community as we are all eagerly looking towards and preparing for the start of school, which effectively begins tomorrow in the state of Massachusetts. We have, in Wilmington, like most other districts, completed 10 days of related professional development and training, and were up until late last week on a path towards plans of reopening in a hybrid model. This is the path that our community wanted, and it's the one that I and my team have been working endlessly on the last 10 or probably 12 weeks, going back until mid-June. Suffice it to say that this evening, while I know that thousands of our Wilmington children and families are deeply disappointed, mad, and upset, and a variety of emotions regarding the path that we are now on, I will share with you that those are feelings that I hold as well, and that I want the community to know that. I have heard from many of our community members, in addition to the public comments that have been shared this evening, and I thank you for your, your outreach and your emails, and I'll certainly endeavor to get back to you as quickly as possible. It's, it's a, it's a very hectic and busy time, as I'm sure everyone can appreciate. Tonight, my intent is to provide the community with an update on our status, the work that's unfolded in the last few days, and where it is that at the current time I see us heading as we get set to begin the year. First and foremost, and I appreciate some of the comments that were raised, this is, this is one slide that, of just a handful here tonight that I'll share with you, that I shared with our staff yesterday. Yesterday, we, even though it was day number nine of our, of our 10-day professional development and training, really utilized yesterday morning as the more formal kickoff in a, in a traditional sense had we been here in person and things were of some degree of normalcy. And it, it seems to me like it's just incredibly appropriate to pause upon this because at least it's the case that even if we were opening in a hybrid model, this year is going to be a very challenging year, and that the importance of resiliency, the importance of flexibility and adaptability as we continue collectively to try and attend to health and safety and social emotional well-being is certainly going to be so critical as we move forward. Can you advance that, Mr. Lord? Please. First, though, before, before I begin, I do want to, I do want to take this opportunity, and these next couple of slides are from that of the presentation yesterday to staff, to extend my thanks to a couple of particular groups that deserve so much praise and thanks, and that this community of Wilmington needs to know how, how hard folks are working behind the scenes. Our, our school committee members, their names are listed there, and many of those in the community know this. It's never lost upon me that they are community volunteers and have, like so many school committee members throughout the Commonwealth, arguably throughout the country, also been asked to give an inordinate amount of their time these last few months, engaged in public meetings, and, and they've given this time away from their families and their own personal lives, and certainly, these circumstances have forced them to go well beyond that which they signed up for. And our community of Wilmington should be incredibly proud of their work, their representation of this community, and certainly, it is a pleasure to be part of their team as we work collectively towards the best interest of Wilmington and our students that we serve. Next slide, Mr. Lord, if you would. I also would be remiss if I didn't extend my thanks to so many of our key leaders, our building leaders, our district leaders, and in particular, members of the central office leadership team, Christine Elliott, our new Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Staff Development, Paul Roggerio, Assistant Superintendent of Administration and Finance, Andrea Stern Armstrong, our Director of Human Resources, Alice Brown-Legrand, Director of Student Support Services, and Ken Lord, Director of Technology and Digital Learning. They have been right alongside the school committee and myself working these past 12 weeks in, in anything but a typical summer, and I thank them for their support as we work on reopening. The, the beginning of the year is always one to welcome new staff to our midst, and there's an awful lot of names. I'm certainly not going to read these this evening, but in the process of not only preparing for school reopening, we had a tremendous number of retirees that parted ways with Wilmington last year, and so was an incredibly active offseason, if you will, to try and bring onboard a whole host of new staff members, and we welcome them to Wilmington. Whoops, now it's working. And some additional new staff as well. So, rising to the challenge that is before us. Let's get on with, with, with the update and really the heart, I know, and the interest of the community around the challenges that are before us right now and where, where they inevitably will take us in the months ahead. I think that it's really important as we pause and reflect just even momentarily on where we're at right now to keep a couple of things in mind this evening, and that is that the current path that we find ourselves on is no one individual's fault. To lay blame or to suggest that the reason we, and as you will see in just a moment, many other districts are grappling with these incredible difficult challenges is, is simply wrong, in my opinion, and misguided. If there are any larger circumstances to blame for the fate of why we are here, this intersection is, is because of the intersection of a number of factors, including the health crisis, first and foremost, and certainly, the guidance that has been indeed issued by the state ultimately is left to each district, each school district in the Commonwealth, of which there are approximately 350, to find their own way and to carve their own path. And to work out these complex problems in a variety of different set of circumstances and contextual factors is really challenging, and it is not the same in every single district. Desi set forth circumstances, and in some of the public comments a moment ago, I know I heard and I've heard before, why would it not be the case that perhaps the plan was worked out in, in June? I will remind our community that the Department of Education continued to release guidance that was supposed to provide the, the parameters, the context for school reopening up until the end of July. In fact, I think I'm mistaken in that, until the first part of August. And so, there has been the reality upon which all school districts, not just Wilmington, have been working, is set around that important reality that I think is, is really important to, to underscore. And certainly, at the heart of all of that planning is safety for students and staff, necessary PPE, obviously, a new pursuit that we, like so many other entities, are having to pursue. And also, last but certainly not least, figuring out how education would unfold within the context that we find ourselves. Mr. Lord, sorry. So that coloration, I'm sorry, for, at least for the school committee and perhaps at home, does not come through very, very clearly, and I apologize for that, we'll fix that. But of the school districts in the state, it is my understanding that somewhere around 25 to 30% are now, now opening under a remote learning model. This slide showcases those districts that are closer by to Wilmington that are set to open their own school year, if, tomorrow if not sooner, under a remote model. That includes Reading nearby, of which I can share with the community the overarching reason that Reading made their shift was due to staffing, as I understand it. In fact, the superintendent has publicly put that as part of the rationale. Lincoln Sudbury, Rockport, Whalen, Dedham, Methuen, Mascalommet, Salem, Lynn, Belmont, Linfield, Framingham, Triton, Watertown, and Waltham, all relatively speaking, nearby districts that are planning for an opening under a remote learning model. There are far more districts than this throughout the Commonwealth, but these are ones that are closer and nearby. And so, it is not the case that I share these to say that we are in good company. This is not that suggestion. This is only a, a small insight, though, for those who are wondering, are we alone in this place that we find ourselves? And the short answer is no. And I would be willing to argue that very quickly, there will be far more districts that will be entering into this place, not the least of which will be metrics that may be changing, that are reporting weekly. So, obviously, we will see, but... The, the, the adjustment of the plan, just to take just a couple of minutes to highlight this, because I do think that this is a really critical piece to provide more context, because I, I fully do understand the many questions, some of which we heard throughout the, throughout the public comment and that I have been receiving. And I, I want to first, first begin by emphasizing one primary fact, and that is that the decision that was made to shift gears, shift direction relatively late in the process, which I certainly acknowledge and recognize, is because my team and I remain convinced, up until late last week, that the pursuit of a hybrid model, or a hybrid learning plan, if you will, remained the best choice for Wilmington. the best choice for Wilmington. That changed based upon the information that I had before me as the superintendent. And as I touched upon in the communication that went out to the community, there were three primary factors upon which that decision to adjust our plan was made. The first and fundamental reason and the overarching concern centered around staff, and I'll get into that in just a moment. Air quality and negotiations, I'll also briefly touch upon in the slides that follow. So first off, with regards to staff, the two following, two slides, rather, that follow. It is indeed the case that the process of negotiations set us on a path of, whoops, did I do that, Mr. Lord? Sorry. Challenges with staffing would be the slide, if you could. That's right, thank you. We finalized the agreement shortly before Labor Day weekend, and the fact of the matter is that did indeed create a very short timeline for staff to indicate to the district their plans specific to leaves, and I'll get into a little bit more detail around the leaves of absence, because I recognize that there are some questions about that. Our Director of HR, Ms. Andrea Stern Armstrong, began a very intensive and very complicated set of work to try and unpack all of the different combinations and permutations truly of staff and what their intentions and plans were. And we, she, rather, and more broadly, our principals, started that work on Tuesday morning, and that that continued literally almost nonstop for the next couple of days. And what became clear to me was that if we were on a path of hybrid model, we may not have had sufficient staff to open and to receive students. And obviously, a fundamental concern when we're talking about certainly the age of some of our students. Next slide, please. I'm going to guess that the staffing, the number, the colors here did not come very through, and so, again, I apologize, I'll make that correction, but what this slide shows on the left, first off, is a couple of contextual factors. There are new regulations that have been introduced, and just to clarify, these are not from Wilmington alone, these span the state, in fact, they're federal, and some members of our community certainly know that are aware of these, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, or FF-CRA, the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, or EPSLA, and the Emergency Family and Medical Leave Expansion Act. As an employer, we have an obligation, like all districts and all, I guess, public entities certainly, to conform with and follow those respective guidelines, they're the law, if you will. The district has been committed to following those laws, and we began that process in early July to try and determine the specific plans of our staff. We have approximately 500 staff, round figures, throughout the district. It's indeed appropriate to say, some districts have negotiated language around the leaves, some have not, they've taken different approaches, but ultimately, at the end of the day, it is the requirement of the employer, Wilmington Public Schools and the town, to follow the law as it pertains to staffing leaves. The school committee, they are the bargaining agent with the WTA, and they participated in that process, and that agreement was reached on September 3rd. That's a memorandum agreement, as we refer to it as, and that's posted on our district website under contracts, in case those are interested. The numbers on the right-hand side, though, I do want to spend a moment just drawing attention to this. We had, at the different levels, and by levels I mean early childhood, elementary, middle, and high, eight staff at early childhood, 21 at elementary, 18 at middle, and seven at high school, who requested a remote position. The middle column indicates how many positions that we were able to assign for remote positions. And so you may be questioning that, because you may say, "Well, all of our staff are now in a remote teaching position, are they not?" Well, now they are, but at the time period that we were trying to unravel all of this, we were committed to a hybrid plan. And so, we have a large number of students that are, whose parents, guardians, have signed them up for Cohort C, or the Remote Learning. At the elementary level, just as a point of context, it's approximately one class at each grade level. I think I have that right, but anyway. And so, the point is, is that we indeed had a need to assign staff to remote positions. But we did not have enough remote positions for everybody who indicated that they wanted a position. And that's a really important factor, and that's what the right-hand column shows, and we'll fix the color here. But four at the early childhood, four people did not receive a remote position, 11 did not at the elementary, that is to say, we couldn't offer them one. I think it's five at the middle and seven at the high school. And the issue with that is that we did not know definitively whether or not the staff, if we had opened in a hybrid model, would immediately take a leave of absence. Let me just restate that again, in another way. Had we opened in a hybrid model, it could have been the case that we had 11 staff members at the elementary level who immediately would have gone on leave. And they may have been entitled to do that, based upon the parameters of the law and the agreement that was established. And so, just taking you back in time, here we are at the middle of last week, Wednesday, knowing the clock was ticking, and knowing that if we were going to, or if I was going to make this decision to change course, it would be a horrific situation to get into the weekend, let alone the beginning of this week, to make that decision. And so, based upon the information before us, and based upon the fact that we did not have time to further vet that, it was a gamble, and it wasn't one that I was willing to take. And so, I'm sorry to go into such detail, but this is a key piece of this. The next slide around HVAC, Mr. Lord. A lot of text here, but just to, again, provide some context, we did indeed engage a third party around the HVAC assessment, as folks know, I won't spend a lot of time on this. We are, though, the third bullet, I think is important to point out, that the town is currently in the process of investigating a secondary study to evaluate airflow. We have a great building here in the high school in terms of its vintage, it's obviously relatively new, that is not the case for our other buildings, and so, there, certainly the exploration right now of a second study to evaluate the HVAC systems in our other buildings. There is a recommendation within the report that was completed for those portable air purifiers, those are a key or instrumental piece to have on hand, as we understand it, because of the HVAC units in our seven other schools that are unable to accommodate the MERV-13 filter. When that's the case, portable HEPA air purifiers are called for, recommended, and well, far for it to me to be an expert in HVAC, that I am not, but what I have a clear understanding of is such a recommendation is a key piece of air quality in the absence of these MERV-13 filters. We placed orders for almost 400 units, and they are ordered, they are, as I outlined, expected the middle part of October. If we get those units sooner, or if they start to come in sooner, then certainly we will recircle what our reopening perhaps can be. But I know some had comments around the fact that that's not until the heating season, and that's understood, but it seems to me, based upon that recommendation, that that would be an important modification, if you will, to the operations of our classrooms. And furthermore, we don't exactly know when heat's going to come on anyway, obviously that, you know, things could change quickly. This is an important piece, I think, of us going forward for HVAC. The next slide, finally, around, really quickly around negotiations and a status update there, and as I've said before, through the communications, we continue to work through negotiations with the Wilmington Teachers Association and the WTA. We began those negotiations in the early part of August. We have had, I believe it's 12 meetings, including one earlier today. And certainly, for those that are curious, Massachusetts school districts, again, I mentioned, there's approximately 350 throughout the state. It certainly appears to be the case that most are engaged in negotiations with their local unions around reopening plans. The memorandum of agreements, or MOAs, are generally posted, or should be generally posted, on school district websites, so for those that are curious around what those will look like, once we get to that point of agreement and the school committee ratifies that, as would be the case with the WTA, we will indeed post those agreements on our website as well, too. The support of high-needs students, next slide, please, Mr. Lord, thank you. Just a real quick point here, because this is, it would be easy, perhaps, to get lost in the mix of everything that we are talking about here and moving everyone to a remote status. We have an obligation under the Department of Education, an obligation both as a public school district, as well as a moral obligation imperative, to serve those students that are within a category called high needs. That is not a Wilmington title that we created, it's something the Department of Ed has carved out, and specifically for students that fall within a couple of different domains, and that through an objective process, lead to those that rightly should receive additional instruction in person, regardless of the state or model in which the district's operating. Let me just restate that. The Department of Education expects that regardless of whether a district is operating in a hybrid model or a remote model, it is the expectation that students that qualify for, or fit into, if you will, the high needs category, have to be served in-person instruction, I believe it's either two, three, four, or five days a week. And there's criteria that the Department of Education puts out, so it is not the case that Wilmington, or Reading, or Burlington establishes that criteria on their own, if they're following the DESI guidelines. We have 140 approximately, just under, I just checked this with Ms. Brown-Lagrande this afternoon, 140 high-needs students, that we have that obligation, quite frankly, under the law to service. Those students, because of the state that we're in right now, we are shifting programs to the high school. This is a big endeavor, not just from a management or administrative standpoint, but it's also asking very young children, obviously, to move into a different environment, that which is different from that which they're used to. Obviously, this building has sound HVAC systems here, but the plan, at least as I believe it to be, is that these 140 students will ultimately take over most, I think, of the high school, by the time the different necessary rooms are taken over for various services. So most of the high school will be used to deliver programs and services to 140 of our students, starting on Monday of next week. And so I just thought I would bring focus to that, because I do think that it's important. I want to stress, it's not the reason why we are on the path to remote model, but the path to remote model, given the circumstances, required us to adapt and adjust, and this is the adjustment that we've made here. Okay. My advancer. Mr. Lord's a busy guy. Just a couple more slides, and then I'm happy to take any questions. So, obviously, this shift, this pivot, the word that's used so frequently around these discussions, has not, it's not lost upon us that we need to think holistically about the provision of support and information for our families. And this here is just a snapshot of the cover of the document that was sent out to our families today, resources and support, the Reopening 2020 Family Resource Guide. Thank you to Ms. Christine Murray and Doreen Crowe that put this together. This was, I know that our families have been inundated with communication, and for that I apologize, but this is an important document that we thought, within this, you'll find a focus on a number of resources around social emotional well-being, mental health, and health and safety. And this document, like everything else, we're trying to be diligent in posting this on our district website under the reopening section, and you'll find that there. Next slide, if you could, please, Mr. Lord. Thank you. Also, thank you to Ms. Christine Elliott, who pushed out yesterday to our families both a standalone slide deck, as well as a voiceover presentation, just to provide a little bit more context, this is the cover of that, and you can find this, this was also sent out in an email to families yesterday, and this provides more of the logistics around the specific approach or plan that's being taken for the remote learning. And there's information in here around such things as how the exact scheduling will work, Cohort A, B, and C, and so on. I'll just pause here, it seems like an appropriate point. One of the items that was raised as a question in the public comments was around equity, inclusion, and for cohorts. And just to clarify that, within the, under the remote learning model that we now find ourselves in, Cohort A, B, and C students will receive the same synchronous instruction, right, correct? How to define that, unlike would be the case within the hybrid model. And so, I wanted to point that out, but I also will point out that this shift to the fully remote path, we opted to still keep our cohorts together, or as was defined, Cohort A, B, and C. And we're doing so because we want to be prepared for when it's time to come into a hybrid plan. To not have done so would have created a whole lot more moving parts and shifts that is not something that I think would be best for, in my opinion, any district to try and grapple with here, as we're trying to do this. The, next slide, Ken, just a couple more, I think, here. The color-coded metric is, this you've seen before, but I just think it's an important piece to also point out, as we get now into the school year, Commissioner O'Reilly recently, just yesterday, I think it was, released a memo to school committees throughout the Commonwealth, and in that memo, there was specific information around the color-coded health metric. This is a quote from Commissioner O'Reilly, "With each weekly update of the color-coded health metric, we have seen municipalities falling in and out of the red and/or yellow designations. For this reason, it is critically important that school districts do not make decisions based upon a single report from DPH, or the Department of Public Health. Instead, I recommend that school districts wait for color changes in either direction in three consecutive weekly reports before considering a change to an instructional model, remote, hybrid, or in person." And I just share this in sort of, because this is fresh in terms of a perspective of Commissioner O'Reilly, but again, as the school year gets started, I think many in the community are probably aware that it's on Wednesdays that the DPH, generally speaking, releases their update on numbers within the community. We do recognize, according to Ms. Newhouse, that we have had an increase in Wilmington. I believe that she reported that yesterday, the selectmen's meeting, and so tomorrow, being Wednesday, we will get an update on where Wilmington's status is. I don't know what that looks like, that's something between the Department of Public Health that pushes out to the local Board of Directors, or Board of Health. Last, I think this is the last slide, Ken, or there are two more. So I will take this opportunity, and for lack of a better term, some good news, perhaps, but hopefully it's received this way by members of our community. We know, certainly I know well, you know well, that the CARES program is so beloved here in Wilmington and has been on pause because of the overarching situation. Ms. Parker and so many of her staff have been chomping at the bit to try and get something together, and I'm so pleased, on behalf of her and her staff, to be able to share this with you, that it is something, it's not the CARES program that we had hoped for if things were a little bit more normal. But we recognize that this change into the direction of fully remote has caused many families to scramble for childcare. And so, this, I'm pleased to be able to share tonight, is an effort that we will be hopefully well-received and make a small dent in the ability to try and support families. And the plan here is to target students in grades one to five. We have great limitations based upon physical distancing, but the plan here is to create pods per grade level with CARE staff as adult supervision. It's not a huge number of students, but it hopefully will be viewed as something to provide basically a safe place where students can engage in their learning remotely, be cared for, be supervised, and be fed. And Ms. Parker's worked hard to collaborate with her staff that are not Wilmington Public Schools employees, and who are ready, willing, and able to launch this program Ms. Parker's hopeful for as soon as the end of September. Again, we recognize it's, you know, a very limited number, however, we're hopeful that we'll be able to help out some families during this time of fully remote. And lastly, last slide, our path forward- And lastly, last slide, our path forward. Obviously, we have lots of work to contend with as we, we contend with or deal with all of these issues. Staffing challenges. It was a great question raised earlier in, in one of the public comments. How do we, how do we figure out the staffing challenges here? I, I think that this is going to be an incredibly difficult situation for all districts. I just, I don't see how it can't be. The provisions of the law that allow for someone to take 12 weeks leave or an entire year off unpaid, and, and this, this, I think, will be very fluid. However, the, the answer to that question is that this place that we find ourselves in, as difficult as it is to be on this path of fully remote for some time, allows us now to further drill down with those staff who had expressed a need for or desire for, request for a remote position, to truly find out what their, their plans will be, and then to be able to post and hire for those that may take a leave if they can't be provided a remote position. So we have a little bit of time, not a lot, but a little bit of time to be able to work that out. I'm, I'm not, I, I'm certainly very worried, as I'm sure all my superintendent colleagues are, what this looks like. We, we don't even have a sense of what the field looks like in terms of those that may want to be, who are looking for jobs right now in education. So this, this certainly could be a challenging situation for us. The HVAC-related improvements, more, more to come on that. I think I've talked enough about that, finalizing negotiations, and obviously continuing to monitor the metrics within the communities. And, you know, the, the, the numbers here and there sound like they may be, in some communities on, on the rise. I know that was the case in Linfield. Sounds like it's here in Wilmington, and so obviously we'll be, we'll be incredibly mindful of that. And in closing, you know, I, I, I recognize that this time period is, is incredibly daunting. I think no matter what role you're playing or, or holding, these are challenging circumstances, and I know people are, are sort of getting a little bit tired of hearing that, but they are, they continue as we continue to try and balance health and safety and education and all of the other overarching needs, but we will get there. We will work through it, perhaps not without some bumps in the road, but we will continue to try and do what's right for the students of Wilmington and our families. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions if you have.
If you don't mind, I'd like to take a comment, a, um, share a comment. Just to put this in perspective of the undertaking our districts, you know, as well as-
Others across the Commonwealth have taken. In my experience, it, you know, in a usual school year, it can take six to 12 months to create a new program or bring in a new curriculum. Districts across the Commonwealth have been asked to create whole new schools, programming, from walking in to walking out and to everything in between in a matter of six to eight weeks without guidance from the Department of Education or the state. And that has to be kept in perspective, that what would typically take us six to 12 months to roll out in our school community, the school district has been forced with the challenge of creating this whole piece within a very short window of time. And I just, I know it's been frustrating. I, I know, especially knowing that there's so much unknown, you just want to prepare your kids for the, for the strongest step, for a step in this new world of education that we're facing. But this pandemic drives, drives it to the point that, as difficult as it is for me to say, it's going to be a fluid situation for this whole school year, so flexibility and resiliency are key. And I, I just want to share with the community that it truly is, and I've seen it with my own eyes, and I've been a part of it myself this whole summer. This wasn't a summer for our district leadership. They worked around the clock, seven days a week, 12-hour days, to create, to get to this point, and it's a daunting task, and I, the gravity of it, I just, I can't formulate into words, but I, I just want to express my appreciation sincerely to the commitment that the staff and the district leadership and the administrators of our school district have to the children of, of our community. And it's, no district is, is alike in its, in its needs. And so, you know, when I hear things about, well, this district got it together, but why didn't Wilmington? Their needs are different, the flow is different, everything is, is different, even though we're in the same, we're faced with the same challenges. And I just, words cannot express my sincere appreciation and sacrifice to get us to even to this point because, you know, so much of it, we are, we are creating the playbook, and I want to thank each and every one of your leadership team and the administrators and the staff for, for working collaboratively together and, and trying to, to do the best for our students. I wish it was much more, I wish it was quicker, but we will get there, and I, I know we will get there together, and I just want to, I just felt the need to express myself in that capacity, that it, it can't go unsaid.
Questions or comments?
Thank you. I echo what Ms. Burns said, you know, it's incredibly, you know, for, for Dr. Brand, your team is such an incredibly, I mean, for everybody, but it's, there are so many different moving parts, and it's so incredibly complicated. I think that most people, you know, it's, it's hard to grasp how difficult this whole situation is, so I just want to thank everybody for their, you know, their, their hard work, you know. One question that I did have was about the high needs kids here at the high school and what the transition might look like for those students once, you know, hopefully we move into hybrid here at the high school, and so the high school kids come back, and then those kids are going to need to transition down to their lower schools is, is how much, how is that gonna, how is that gonna work, thinking about the, the students, you know, being high need, and, and transitions can be very difficult for those students?
Yeah, that's a great question. I guess I would say that one of the, if, if there's one thing that we, we sort of do have, all districts, I suppose, have going for them, is, is, is a lot more flexibility in terms of the ability to kind of shift things along the continuum of the learning model of, of day, days. Well, we don't know yet, obviously, when that time will come, but when it is to, I, I truly think that we can take full charge of and control of what the situation would seem to be, to be deemed best. You know, I, I would imagine that our younger students might need maybe a couple more days to be, to be in a school facility, perhaps by themselves, before the rest start to come in by a grade level. So I, I think we can, creative is certainly not the right word, but, but creative in terms of planning for what seems to be best. And I think, you know, unlike a normal school year where there's just, you know, there's really very little flexibility, I, I think the circumstances now will be able to provide everyone with that. And so it would be, we would be wrong of us not to take advantage of that. So I think we'll, you know, we'll have to have those conversations with, once that becomes a little bit more in view. Okay.
Thank you. Mrs. Newhouse?
This is, this is-
Like, coming into the meeting tonight, a lot of parents still had questions on, you know, what is tomorrow gonna look like? You know, when is my child supposed to log on? Do we have logistics on when, you know, have, should parents have received information tonight from teachers, or is that all coming out tomorrow night? I mean, I know I've received some as a parent, but maybe not all, and maybe they've come in since we've been here, but I'm just curious what the logistics and what parents should have expected if they haven't seen anything.
Well, I'll, I'll start a response to that, and I, I don't know, Ms. Elliott, if you want to jump in or if you, if you feel like you're gonna offer anything additionally, but I, I should have said in the presentation, and I apologize for not doing so, this has certainly been a source of some, some great disappointment. The lateness in which the release of, of teachers was first made, or sections was first made, and just to reiterate, it, that reason wasn't with deliberacy that we were trying to hold things up to the very end. It, it goes back to that staffing situation that I mentioned a little bit earlier in the presentation. The principals were truly, truly chomping at the bit. They wanted to get out. They wanted to get out to their families, the schedules or the class assignments or the teacher assignments. And unfortunately, we had to tell them they had to hold. And they had to hold because we had to have all of those dominoes fall out that I, you know, I know, sort of just mentioned briefly, once we got the leave requests from staff a week ago today. And so that's what ultimately led to the lateness of everything. So sort of, my point is, it's kind of pushed everything forward. It, it is with no intention that anyone, a principal or staff, ever wanted to be this late in the game in terms of sharing links and so on to log on. All of that being said, Ms. Elliott, you have a, maybe a little bit better sense in terms of where things are at?
Well, I've confirmed with every principal that it, every schedule has been pushed out, and teachers were working on that this afternoon and into this evening to make sure every family receives communication about how to log in tomorrow and what the expectations are.
Now, I just had one final question. Now that we've gone remote, fully remote, do we know when parents with kids on IEPs who don't necessarily fall into the high needs kids, when they might receive their remote service plans?
That's a good question that I, I know I should know the answer for, or to, but I don't. I don't want to, I don't want to put out a date that, I, I think I know, but I, I would, let me check and get, well, I'll get back to the committee and we'll make sure that that's out. If that hasn't, perhaps it's not been pushed out by, by Student Support Services.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I do have a couple myself. I've had some really insightful and thoughtful families contact me, I'm sure a lot of us have, over the past couple of weeks, and it's always helpful to have a conversation with them because it, although I don't know the logistics of what's happening in each building, and, and the school committee members don't know the bits and pieces of scheduling, and we sort of have this bird's eye view, and sometimes I, the words that we're using are very, are common to us now, but then a parent will say, I wasn't exactly sure what was meant by asynchronous, or I wasn't sure what was meant by synchronous. So I wondered if we could just provide, and I think, Ms. Elliott, you and I had a conversation earlier in response to cohorts A, B, and C. And so this idea that cohorts A and B should be receiving the same instruction during this remote time as cohort C, which they are, so that's a question I think that's come up quite a bit over the past couple of days. But would you mind just explaining, I guess, the difference between synchronous and asynchronous for families who may, who may not have been sure what they were signing up for? And then how you so eloquently described it to me today, when I was working to talk to a parent about it, sort of the, looking at it as, you know, those of us who have chosen hybrid versus those who chose remote, and there are going to be pros and cons to each side, and I think that might be really helpful, because I think parents are a bit, or families are a little bit frustrated and panicked at this moment, so I think that might provide some clarity.
Happy to. So synchronous instruction means that it is happening in real time, so it may be virtual, remote, but the teacher would be interacting, interfacing with students digitally during a regular school day. So we've described a typical synchronous, a typical day of school instruction being synchronous, meaning that students are greeting their teacher virtually first thing in the morning, through every instructional block. Students may log off or shut their computer screen and microphones off to apply what they've learned, practice something, do a math problem or something like that, log back in. But that is a continuous, ongoing schedule throughout the day that they are live with their teachers as if they were in person, teachers teaching, giving them instruction, they will go back to their seat, work on a problem, et cetera. So it will really mimic the full day. Asynchronous instruction is basically information that is pushed out to students digitally, usually through Google Classroom, with assignments and activities that they, the students will do independently on their own. So there could be a video or some other slideshow with information, so there is some instruction, you know, coming with that oftentimes, but the students are doing it independently without teacher support, so that would be asynchronous. The, the hybrid model is, as most of you have seen so many times through different presentations and in what we've shared, students will be in-person, if you are in cohorts A and B, when we get to that phase of a hybrid model, students would be in-person on Monday and Thursday, or Tuesday and Friday, depending on which cohort they're in. So Wednesdays, I'll just speak to Wednesdays, first of all. All of our students will be remote on Wednesdays in this model, in the hybrid model. In the morning, they would be synchronous with their teacher altogether, both cohorts A and B, the whole class together. The idea is to build community so that they will be able to be together, so when we're hopefully back in full person, they will be, feel like they're all a part of the same class. And the afternoon, they would have asynchronous assignments. Most likely, the instruction that happens in the morning will really direct them about what they need to do in the afternoon. So that's Wednesday. So when cohort A is in the building on Monday, they will have the live synchronous instruction all day, and that will be a lot of direct instruction from the teacher. They're going to really try to maximize the amount of time they have the students present for that in-person instruction. A day might typically, in a normal school day, a day may typically be more time for students to practice what's taught in the class. There will, that won't necessarily happen as much in this model because teachers will really want to capitalize on having those students present with them, saving some of that practice time for the next day, for cohort A. On Tuesday, they would have that time to practice what was taught. So that's the, the benefit of being in that hybrid model, is that you have that in-person contact and the connection with your teacher and your other students who are in the cohort with you. So that, that definitely is the benefit of it. But the curriculum, we have established pacing guides for all of our elementary curriculum at this point that focuses in on the, really the key lessons that students need in order to, so we've identified the standards, we need to hit the standards regardless of the model, all of the Massachusetts frameworks. We've looked at our curriculum and decided, what are the lessons that really are the most bang for your buck, if you will, that get to the heart of what we're trying to teach our students? Those are being prioritized for the three lessons a week in any subject that a hybrid student would get direct instruction from their teacher. Monday, Wednesday, Thursday for cohort A, Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday for cohort B. So we are taking those three power lessons, if you will, that we know get to the heart of a standard and prioritizing those. There are additional two lessons a week that are in the pacing charts for our cohort C students. So the difference with cohort C is they are in remote instruction five days a week with a different teacher. As Dr. Brand mentioned, we've identified the cohort C teachers now, so that students will be assigned to those teachers when we are able to move into a hybrid. That teacher will remain stable with that cohort of students, so that they won't have to have that level of transition. So in a hi, in a cohort C remote model, when we are in a hybrid model, those students will have five days a week instruction synchronously with their teacher, with the exception of Wednesday afternoon, will also be asynchronous for that model as well. And during that period of time, the, the students would hit on those same three core lessons, but then the other two days of the week, they will have additional lessons on the same standards and concepts that just help to reinforce that same standard that's being taught. The benefit of that model, they, so they don't get the in-person connection that they would be getting in the hybrid model, but the benefit of that model is there's more time built into the school, into their school day for a teacher to provide instruction, provide some small group guided instruction or guided support for students, independent practice time built into the day, then more instruction. So whereas the in-person has a lot more direct instruction with the practice happening the next day, the cohort C model has more opportunity for practice built into the daily schedule because there's a little bit more flexibility with the time. So there are pros and cons to both models. The Department of Education has, you know, made it clear and available for families to make that choice about what is the best model for their, their children. And they have also allowed for the opportunity, knowing that the needs of families and children change throughout the course of the year, so there is the opportunity for families to make a switch from one model to another, of course, allowing the district enough time to be able to make that change in a way that is appropriate for the student. that change in a way that is appropriate for the students, so that we can make sure it's the best scenario for the students' transition. So that, I think, kind of, you know, sort of gives the opportunity to see what some of the benefits are, and some of the, you know, the pros and cons. Opening in a fully remote model as we are right now, every student will be with their teacher synchronously every day, except for the Wednesday afternoon, when they're doing some asynchronous work. So regardless of what model they're in, that is how we will be opening. The advisory committee that worked this summer to, to develop the suggested schedules, has suggested that if we were to open in a hybrid model as we initially intended, that the rationale was that we would, then if we were to go remote, so let's say we opened hybrid, the metrics changed, and we needed to shut down the schools and go into a remote model, their recommendation was that for the sake of consistency for students, that the children who were in cohort A would meet synchronously with the teacher in cohort A remotely, and the, and the schedule would remain the same. So if they were synchronous on Monday and Thursday, they would remain synchronous, if they were in person, they'd remain synchronous. So that was the recommendation of the committee for the consistency, because there could be a point in time when, you know, it might be, one school is shut down, and then for a short period of time, and then able to come back in person. And so they, they thought that having the fluidity, or the flexibility for the cohorts to be able to shift in that way. So that was the original recommendation as to why they would want to make that shift if we were starting hybrid and then going remote for any period of time.
Thank you. That's very, very helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, if, so just to be clear, everyone is starting now remotely, and so cohorts A and B are getting
Yes.
the same synchronous as cohort C. I know, I'm just making sure everyone else.
Exactly. Yeah, I know, a lot of information.
Could that be revisited? So if this goes very well, and then we start hybrid, but then for some reason we need to go remote again, could there be some discussion about whether or not it makes sense to keep cohort A and B and give them the synchronous?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I think so.
Thank you so much. That's very, very helpful.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, I just, I'm sorry, one more, just one more thing. If families feel, especially, especially those who chose hybrid, for whatever reason they chose hybrid, that the, especially for young children, spending all of that time synchronously across the week is too much, what do you recommend they do, I guess? What, has there been any thought to, it might just be too much for a first or second grader, or maybe even a fifth or sixth grader? Like, what should families do if they are starting to feel that way?
Well, I, I do think-
You don't have to answer me right now. I guess I'm just putting that out. I guess that can be an FAQ. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think that's been something that's been coming to me a lot, especially those who thought their children would be doing asynchronous work on some of those, this idea of sitting in front of a screen for that many hours could just be a lot. And I think, right now, I think as parents, we're all so happy that, I think, Ms. Newhouse, we have a schedule, I haven't left, but I think, and I think we're ready to, I think we're ready to log on, and I feel, I'm like so excited, but then I haven't really thought past how excited I am that we're, it's going to be Wednesday, and we're, it's actually going to be the first day of school. I'm like, so thrilled, but I haven't thought about what it's going to be like for my child to be on Zoom for all that time. Mrs. Newhouse?
I guess I just had one follow-up question from my original question on, you know, parents at this point should have all their information, should have all their log on. If they don't have any information, you know, an email didn't go through, for some odd reason, who should the parents reach out to tomorrow morning, or even send an email to tonight to help rectify that, so their kids?
It would be directly to the school.
Directly to their kid's school.
And, you know, I would imagine that, they, they should have their child's teacher. So I would, I would certainly check with them, but obviously the building leadership can, can certainly assist with that, too.
Okay.
It makes me, if I may, just, one thing sort of around scheduling that I meant to mention earlier, and it makes me think about that. I know that the question perhaps is out there, two, two, two things. One, you know, having a younger child log on all day, that's a lot to ask. And so just, you know, what we're trying to do is trying to follow the recommendations of the Department of Ed, that these are meant to be, right, this is the, the change from the spring. This is meant to be a far more robust endeavor of having students engaged for effectively a whole day. I think it would be, this is something we're going to have to navigate everywhere, in terms of what do we do, and how do we handle when a young, young person just can't stay logged on for that kind of time. And, and so systematically, we're going to have to, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to deal with that. The, the start and end times, I know is a question that's also come up, in terms of school, and why is it that we didn't unify the start and end times, and why are we following the, the typical in-school times? There was some, there was some, certainly some thought given to that, and I think, Ms. Elliott, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm probably going to hit two of the factors. Number one, just for the essence of consistency, you know, we're starting off a new year, and we thought it might be a real hardship to just get people into one routine, and then have to switch. And when we open in hybrid, we will have to, largely driven, no pun intended, but largely driven by the transportation, have to align with what our typical start and end times are. So it was thought to just get everyone in that routine. And then secondly, we do have some shared staff that also, right, will be responsible across buildings to deliver content. And so it would be impossible, correct, in terms of having those, the schedules all be at the same times? I don't know if I've forgotten any else's rationale.
So, so in speaking about students in cohorts A and B, that is, we, you know, we left the school's start times and end times as is. Because we, in cohort C at the elementary level, because there are some situations where students may be grouped together for remote learning with an assigned Wilmington teacher, so for third grade, for example, we might have students from both Shawshine and Woburn Street in the same class for third grade remote learning, and their start and end times are different. So rather than, and knowing that they would be remote for the year, because that was their elected model, that they would, we took the, sort of the middle, if you will, of those start and, start and end times, and split the difference, so that those students would have that start time together. But anybody else who was in cohorts A and B, the school's start time would stay the same.
Thank you so much. All right. Item B is appointment of superintendent to SEEM Board. There is a recommended motion. Dr. Brand, do you want to just say anything about this?
Sure, sure, really briefly. There is a memo that accompanies this item in the packet. The SEEM Board is the collaborative, the special education collaborative that we belong to, and as an annual, as an annual action by school committees. This is pursuant to governing law now. You need to formally appoint myself as the superintendent to the SEEM Board of Directors. So there is an action here seeking your approval tonight.
Would someone like to make the motion? Mr. Bjork?
I move to appoint Superintendent Glenn Brand to the SEEM Board of Directors for the 2020, 2021 school year.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Newhouse, thank you. All in favor? That is unanimous. Next, we have approval of annual school committee meeting calendar. This is also a motion. Are there any comments or questions about the calendar?
I'm sorry, who made that motion, please?
Mr. Bjork, and then Mrs. Newhouse.
On the calendar?
No, we didn't do the motion yet.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to make the motion?
Mr. Fenely fidgeting in his seat again.
You're way ahead of me.
Am I fidgeting?
So, we haven't, the dates are listed. You will notice that our next meeting in September is the 30th, and then, because September is a kind of a funny month, and then we go back to the 2nd and 4th. There's one in November, one in December, but of course, if we need to add additional ones, we will. Is there a motion? Mrs. Newhouse?
I move to approve the annual school committee meeting calendar.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous. Item D, we have fall athletics, Middle Sex League update. There's also a motion here. Dr. Brand?
There is, thank you. In your packet, there is, there is a memo from Ms. Museo, our director of athletics. The, as we mentioned before, the Middle Sex League is, is very tightly aligned in terms of their, their approach to the upcoming school year, which I think is terrific and is great to see. I know that the athletic directors have been continuously meeting in terms of sort of plotting out their specific approach, and again, in terms of an effort to be aligned and consistent, which of course makes sense. This memo outlines specifically, at this point in time, the recommendations for how to proceed, the sports that will be offered. I just want to stress for the community that's maybe curious of this, that this is really largely governed by the MIAA in concert with the Department of Education. And, and so what you see here are not sort of independent Wilmington decisions around which sports will or will not be offered, but rather what the Middle Sex League intends to do in conjunction with the guidance that has been put forth. So there's definitely some alterations, and, but nevertheless, it is the recommendation that school committees, it's not ultimately necessary, but it is the recommendation, and we thought the best, I think it best to have you approve participation as a district in those activities that are listed there. I will let you know, just in case you're wondering, that there are certainly communities that are in a remote learning model, that are planning, and their committees have voted to participate in athletics. Watertown, Belmont, Arlington is another community that should have been on the list, by the way, that's opening, as I understand it, remotely, and Melrose. So certainly, if you were wondering about that, there is no issue there. So tonight, we would be seeking your approval, and the motion is there for your consideration.
Mr. Bjork?
I actually, you just, you beat me to my question. It was whether any other remote, systems opening remote are going to participate. And hearing that, I'd be prepared to offer the motion if, unless there is further discussion.
Mrs. Newhouse?
I guess, I, I've somewhat struggled with this one, only because, you know, the date is there that we should be able to open, we should be able to educate our kids, and then, and to be, you know, to think that, okay, but it's okay for them to go play sports. But I also understand that it's also, I think, in the best social emotional position for our kids to be able to participate if they can. So I've struggled with this, but I do think it hopefully is in the best interest of our kids to be able to offer these programs.
Anybody else have a question or comment?
Yes, so I'll move to approve the participation in field hockey, boys and girls soccer, boys' golf, and boys and girls cross country during the fall one season, under the guidelines and modifications outlined by the MIAA, EEA, DESE, and additional direction voted on by the Middle Sex League Athletic Directors.
Thank you. Is that your second? Mrs. Burns? Thank you. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item E, designate of school committee member to serve on committee to recommend owner's project manager for Town Hall School Admin Building. We talked a little bit about this last time. I think, I think Mr. Bjork maybe had some interest in this, but I think we wanted to find out the timing. Do you have that, Mr. Bjork?
Yes, I do. I reached out to Town Manager Hull, and I'll just read a short paragraph, just so everyone knows. "The initial phase will likely require several meetings, virtual or otherwise, as members of this committee will review proposals to reach a short list of owner's project manager candidates, then schedule interviews, again, probably virtually, with that short list, before making a recommendation to the town manager." Town manager expected this activity to take place late September into October. And then once the OPM is on board, the meetings will be less frequent, probably monthly, at the, at the most twice a month, while the OPM and architect work with the group to reach consensus of the preferred site, develop a schematic design, and cost estimates for final design and full construction, which ultimately will require town meeting approval." That's kind of the scope of-
Thanks so much. So is anyone interested in that? Mr. Bjork, are you still interested in that? Does anyone want to argue with him for that position?
I would, I would have some interest in doing that, unless there's somebody else that would prefer?
Yes?
No, I would make, I would make that motion to appoint Steve, before he changes his mind.
That would be wonderful. I would support that. So would someone like to read the motion?
Would you like?
Mr. Fenely, yes, thank you.
Move to designate a school committee member, Steve Bjork, to serve on the committee to recommend an owner's project manager for the Town Hall School Administration Building.
Mr. Samaha, second? All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Bjork. I will say, we have incredible amount of volunteers here who continue to volunteer for, for many, many committees and work outside of this work. So thank you. And finally, in new business, we have approval of revised 2020, 21 school year calendar. This is also a motion. Dr. Brand, do you want to mention any changes?
Yes, in your packet, some modifications, as, as you might expect with the school calendar, as, as a point for the community. The school committee does annually approve the school calendar, one of the many roles that the committee holds. We've made adjustments. We approved the calendar back in, I don't know when it was, it seems like years ago, but back in the spring, but obviously with the adjustment of the reduction in school days by the Commissioner of Education to 170, the official start date of school to tomorrow, September 16th. We've made those respective adjustments. We've left by and large the rest of the calendar the same. I will point out one thing that is important to note. So the total instructional days for students, as per the Commissioner of Education, is 170. There are 182 workdays contractually for our staff. We've right now just placed the 182nd day at the end of June, just really as a placeholder. And I think as much as we've talked and used the word a few times tonight around flexibility and adjustments, I, I would envision the employment of that day, that 182nd day, quite possibly, when we're talking about transitioning between a model one to the next. You know, we, we may have that real need to shift, we're, we're moving, as an example, a whole bunch of furniture to the high school to support the high needs programs. I mean, there's, there's going to be some give and take. So I just wanted to point that out to you. So the big changes in this calendar, the 170 days for students, the official start date of school for tomorrow, and then just that 180 day. But it would seem appropriate to bring it back for your approval at this point in time.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns?
I have a question. Typically, what's encompassed in our school calendar are snow days. So this year, if we're faced, I know this may be a little premature, because I know we, we need to get through this piece to get to that piece, but do you envision us going remote on those inclement days when schools, if we are in hybrid, are opening up, or even if we are doing remote, sometimes depending upon Nor'easters and stuff, the internet connections can be unstable? What are your, not to hold you to anything, but what, what's your preliminary thinking behind that rationale?
You know, I, I, it's a great question. It's an understandable question. I just don't have the answer for that, because it's not something that yet has come up in the conversations with the Commissioner of Education. I fully expect it will, just given the overarching circumstances, but it's just, it's just not something that's been raised quite yet. So I'll certainly, you know, when it does, or if it does, we'll certainly report-
I know, we have to get up and running first before we approach the other details of a, the dynamics in a district, so. Okay, thank you.
Sure. So again, looking for your approval of the revised 2020, 2021 school year calendar.
Mrs. Burns? Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Fenely, all in favor? That is unanimous. Excellent. Thank you very much. Item eight is subcommittee reports. Are there any subcommittee reports? I know there's one at least. Mr. Samaha?
I just wanted to update the committee that the equity subcommittee met last week. We held our first meeting. This is a brand new subcommittee, so we're trying to define the work that we'll have to do. We took a look at a few other similar school committee, equity subcommittees across the state. state. We're in touch with MASK about the role of this new subcommittee. What we basically did during that meeting was go through the anti-racism resolution we unanimously passed on the 24th of June, and sort of went through that resolution to see what parts of it sort of fall under the purview of the school committee. Just as a reminder to the committee and members of public, we resolved to guarantee that in Wilmington, that racist practices are eradicated, and that diversity, equity, and inclusion are embedded in practice. We further agree to ensure that the culture of our schools will be anti-racist, and acknowledge that all lives cannot matter until Black Lives Matter. In the future, the subcommittee will likely be reviewing policies that impact recruiting, hiring, retaining a diverse staff, looking at professional development and curriculum. In addition, we're going to be looking at different policies, existing policies, that might have, that might promote institutionalized or systematic racism. I'm really excited about the subcommittee's work and the work ahead. I didn't know if anybody had any questions about any of the work. I'm happy to answer. Jen is on the subcommittee with David and I, too, so be happy to take any questions if anybody is curious about what we're up to.
More to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other subcommittee reports? Okay. So item nine is correspondence. This seems like the right time to go back to our public comments. I think we were at number--
Sixteen.
Sixteen. I think that was Mrs. Newhouse.
Christina Moore, nine Sherwin Place. Good evening, Dr. Brand and school committee members. I'd like to begin by saying thank you for your enormous amount of time and effort you have put forth to get our children back to school safely. As a parent of two children on an IEP, I am extremely concerned on how this year is going to go for them. While I am in full support of the hybrid learning model, it doesn't seem that model is going to be feasible even in mid-October, after reading your email last Thursday evening. I'm wondering why so many teachers decided to wait until the week before school is supposed to start to let you know they are taking a leave of absence. Why were they not, why were they not given a deadline to decide if they would be returning this school year? Here we are, days before school starts, and these children do not know who their teachers will be or what their schedule is. This is extremely unsettling and is causing unnecessary anxiety and stress on my children. If we were going to go full remote, then I hope there will be asynchronous learning five days a week for the majority of the school day, even for the children in cohorts A and B. I hope children like mine on an IEP will be able to receive all of their services and that their IEPs are followed completely. I hope you are able to find suitable staff in the coming month to allow these children the opportunity for in-person learning, because if we are completely honest here, remote learning does not even compare to the level of education that in-person instruction provides. In respect to the air quality that is now deemed safe and the appropriate filters have been ordered for the winter months, what is the reasoning why teachers do not want to return to the school buildings for the hybrid learning model? If the air quality safety measures have been met, which you say they have, then what is the problem? Thank you for your time and good luck moving forward. The children of Wilmington are depending on you. Jamie Bornstein, 12 Carolyn Road. As a concerned parent in favor of my kids returning to school, I'd like there to be more transparency provided to us parents on what the negotiations between the school administration, school committee, and WTA are truly seeking. Dr. Brand's email on 9/7/20 states, quote, "We have held a ton of, a total of nine meetings thus far, which have been collaborative and productive." What is meant by that comment, and why are we not being told the specific details of what's being negotiated during these sessions? Besides being a, quote, "parent," and, quote, "understanding," what can we, parents, do to ensure our kids' needs are being met? I'm not downplaying the seriousness of a pandemic, however, we must work to ensure our kids get the best education they deserve, and disappointed in the lack of, quote, "details" being provided to us over this school reopening plan. For as many emails that have been sent out to us over the past several weeks, there is still no real detailed plan being provided, and that's upsetting to hear. There is a phrase that I feel is very appropriate here, quote, "If you fail to plan, you're planning to fail." Please don't fail our kids. Erica Gemolaro, 37 Arlene Ave. Dear Dr. Brand and School Committee--
Excuse me, Joe. Forgive me. Could you please repeat that name?
Erica Gemolaro.
Okay, thank you.
As a mother-in-law, I value your commitment and care to reimagining the high standards of the Wilmington Public Schools' education philosophies. Historically, the Wildcat community has stood strong to strive for the best educational principles. To achieve the educational mission of the community and to stand side by side with the best educators throughout the state, this school system has and should continue to exceed educational endeavors based on student holistic experience. At the current time, the need to reimagine education while supporting pandemic precautions is the only option for the deserving eager and learning hungry students. And this means physical presence for a multitude of reasons, which the choir already knows by memory and feels passionately in their hearts. You know the problems. I would like to talk about potential actionable items, which are ideas for solutions on how to safely move forward during these difficult times. Suggestions on how to get Cohort A and B into the classroom are as follows. Staffing: Consider travel contracts, graduate students, graduate nurses, redeployment opportunities, parent proctor volunteers, community volunteers. Air quality: As a nurse working in a Boston hospital throughout the surge, I've learned firsthand that PPE may very likely be delayed. It is quite likely that HEPA filters will be delayed. In the interim, do as other top educational institutions are doing, and bring the classroom outside whenever possible. When inside, open the windows and recommend fall-out wear for all in the building. This will allow ventilation while taking advantage of our weather-friendly autumn in New England, therefore offering an opportunity for children to meet and connect with their teachers and classmates before the windows must be closed in the winter months, at which point fully remote learning would be required prior to the arrival of the HEPAs. Negotiations: I think of a hospital without nurses, it's the same as a school without teachers. It's essential. Our students need you with precautions, passion, and imagination. Our schools can function safely in a reduced physical manner throughout the remainder of the 2020 school year. Thank you for your time, commitment, and admirable creativity. Respectfully, Erica Gemolaro, concerned mom. Stacy Foti, 5A Fenway Street. Remote learning is failing many students. Asynchronous learning is also failing many students. How are we going to make sure IEP 504 kids are not going to fall behind while they are out of the classroom? Who is making sure the IEP 504 kids don't get left behind? Colleen Laverrato, 5 Oxbo Drive. During springtime, my son, who is in sixth grade, was not taught any new material. I was told that the, that was the union's decision. My son is going into seventh grade with a half-year of sixth-grade knowledge. How are you going to help him catch up with the surrounding towns?
Thank you, Mrs. Newhouse. That brings us to Mr. Smaha, 21. Thank you.
All right. Christine Amendola, 13 Morse Ave. I would like to express my utmost dissatisfaction with whatever teachers are refusing to come back to school under FMLA if it is due to childcare. Everyone else besides teachers has gone back to work. I'm an essential employee as well as my husband. Our kids were in emergency daycare and now hired a nanny to help with the remote learning. We never had the option or luxury of working from home. Teachers should have to get daycare for their own children as well. Yes, it's expensive, welcome to the club. I pay taxes here, and my child deserves to get back into, back into school. They are too young to learn remotely. I hope these teachers refusing to come back can be fired and out of a job. No other unions and jobs are refusing to go back except teachers. We are all going back out to eat, the movies, the beach, time to get back to real life, and I had coronavirus and can say that it was not bad at all if you are not high-risk. Kim Lang, 3 Naples Road. I am struggling to understand what is keeping our children from in-person learning. We are waiting on HEPA filters that should have been ordered long before August. I do not rely on school to babysit my child. I do rely on them to educate. I am a parent and a healthcare worker who has not missed work throughout the pandemic and managed to keep my family safe by taking proper precautions. Most teachers I know have their master's degree in education. I do not. Our children need an education. Their social and emotional health is suffering. I am my child's advocate, and I won't be doing my job as a parent if I did not request that we get back to in-person learning as soon as possible. Kim Lang, Ubrun Street School Parent. Courtney Haddon, 7 Dell Drive. We feel it is imperative for our children to meet with their teachers and classmates, and classmates, at least once before going to remote. If there are concerns about being inside the school, can the classes meet outside on the fields with masks? Jamie M., 22 Earls Road. I would like to know why the remote students in Cohort C are getting a teacher five days per week, but the students who are on the hybrid, who are hybrid, are on their own on their remote days. I do not consider this an education, nor does it seem equitable to what is going, to what is being offered to other students. Hybrid was given as an option and therefore should be equal to whatever other options there were. This is especially difficult to hear, as most families who choose hybrid did so because the parents have jobs that limit their ability to be teaching their own children at home. John Coolis, 11 Central Street. Good evening. I write today with a bit of frustration with our current status pertaining to the school reopening plan. As you have, or will hear from many, there is much frustration from parents, teachers, and students surrounding the uncertainty that we are currently experiencing. While we are truly living in unprecedented times, there are many questions in regards to our district plan's communication and direction. In particular, there is much uncertainty and doubt based upon conflicting or lack of communications from the district. The community is trying to rationalize why we are seeing other districts with clear-cut plans, no delays, with almost, with most already back in school, while we are left in limbo. Tentatively, school is to begin on Wednesday, September 16th, and there are many uncertainties. This is causing much anxiety in the community, including the students. The explanations as to the recent hybrid delay were also not clear-cut. What was interpreted was that the amount of teachers that chose to take leave was larger than expected. The air systems were given a green light, but additional filters were on order to prepare for the winter, and that the WTA negotiations were still going on, were still ongoing. This messaging was not reassuring to the community, but rather worked against any progress. Questions arose as to why the amount of teachers taking leave were not known prior to Friday, to the Friday before Labor Day. There were communications circulated from the WTA with this information. And are we close to a resolution with the WTA that can be announced? The fear is that negotiations will not be completed by the start of school on Wednesday, and a delay will occur. I am truly hoping that these concerns can be eased tonight, but I'm not quite confident of this based upon the past communications and lack of information. This has been a consistent theme from the district over the past years, but the current environment is, but with the current environment, it is much, it is much, it is more important than ever to increase the communication and honesty. I am in absolute awe watching students return to school in other districts and colleges while we sit and wait and wait for answers. It is not fair to the community to be left waiting. It is not fair to the students who are anxious about learning. It is not fair to me to have to explain to my children why decisions cannot be made. If others can figure it out, let's take a page from their plan book and make things happen. Let's be clear as to the intentions of the WTA and the district. Let's not communicate, let's not only communicate, but let's get it done for the sake of the students and the community. Amra Hadzik, 21 Denault Drive. I am very upset with the Wilmington Public School system and how unorganized it has been, and I'm sure hundreds of parents, hundreds of other parents are as well. I feel so confused and uninformed. I think we, as parents, should be the ones making the final decisions if we want our kids to go back to school or not. It should not be your choice. It should be either, it should either be 100% remote or 100% back to school. Teachers who do not feel comfortable, who do not want to come back and teach should be replaced. If it doesn't make any sense, it doesn't make any sense to me, it's a job you get paid. I don't have the choice to go to work or stay home. If I don't go to work, I get fired. You changing the hybrid options date as you please does not help much either. There are parents, including myself, who have to go to work and do not have a lot of options if they want to make, make sure their kids have a roof over their head and food on the table. This just has to be said. Maybe you'll consider making it somehow work for working parents. Not one email you have sent out said anything about working parents. Tracy McCauley, 56 Ashwood Ave. For little perspective regarding my comment, this comment was made Monday, September 14th, at 11:30 a.m. As of this time and date, I have no information regarding my three remaining children in WPS house assignment, teaching assignment, login information, or even hello, yes, school is still starting Wednesday. I have no information on my child's IEP services and still haven't received my daughter's three-year evaluation, and I've heard crickets from the special ed department regarding this. This is unacceptable on so many levels. I understand there is a lot going on with needing to find, rearrange staff, and I'm fully aware this is a fluid situation. However, as a parent, I have to continuously tell my children that I'm sorry, you will know when I know, and it is doing nothing to alleviate any stress my kids have with the start of this uncertain school year. Today, I saw my friend's kids start their school year off at the tech. I'm saddened my kids won't get a real first day. We, as a district, must do better. We had the opportunity to be leaders, but instead resorted to being a follower once again. Other districts figured it out. What was the issue with ours? Hindsight is 2020. We need, as a community and school district, to stop looking behind us and focus on what is in front of us. In front of us are kids who need to be in school. We have kids who get stuck in a union administration battle that they have no business being pawns in. We have kids who will struggle with remote learning, especially since they have no idea what that will look like to them. We have parents who pray this remote learning looks nothing like it did in the spring. What we also have is a lack of communication and transparency from our district. I sat yesterday at my daughter's soccer game in a town 30 minutes from us and overheard a conversation that started, "Have you heard that Wilmington has no idea what they are doing yet and no teacher plans?" This is mortifying, that our lack of preparedness is a joke to other communities. I'm asking you all to do better for these kids, as that is why you are volunteers in this committee. I'm asking you, Dr. Brand, to understand where the anger from parents is coming from, and I'm asking the district as a whole to remember these kids deserve better. My last point is, I would like to know if the district will be releasing the following info. Excuse me. How many teachers took leave and were medical reasons required, and how many kids transferred and left the district? We have a right to know this information. Mariel Muir, 22 King Street. I do not understand why it is not safe for my five-year-old and her teachers to start on 9/21 as in-person as originally planned. I have two children currently in daycare, and they are wearing masks, and there have been no issues with illness, to my knowledge. Why is daycare safe but not kindergarten when they are already split into cohorts to limit capacity? Children this young need in-person instruction and the social interaction that comes along with it. It has been proven to be necessary for their development. Why has there been a last-minute decision to go 100% remote, and when the decision had already been made for in-person? I find it very hard to understand why daycare is safe but kindergarten is not, and can't help but feel that the children's best interest is not truly what is driving this decision. Chalie Clemens, 127 McDonald Road. Why are the parents and caregivers of Wilmington seeing no support for education during the last seven years or during these trying times from the Board of Selectment? How is it we get a drug rehab approved on Main Street and $125,000 approved for a design of a new senior center, but we can't get new schools built? Families are the life of Wilmington. They are drawn here for the quality of its education. Now we have to leave Wilmington to find kids for, schools for our kids? Parents, caregivers, and property taxpayers of Wilmington, wake up. Get involved, stay involved, and vote. It's time for a change. Ethan Sawyer, 58 Lawrence Street. I feel the school committee and Dr. Brand have received an unfair amount of blame for the delay of the opening of the schools. One of the primary reasons for delaying the opening has to do with the inadequacies of the school buildings. Earlier this year, in late 2019, before the coronavirus pandemic hit the world, there was a lot of discussions surrounding what order to tackle the estimated $200-plus million of new buildings and renovations-- million dollars of new buildings and renovations that needed to be done to the municipal buildings in Wilmington over the next ten to twenty years. The Board of Selectmen, at the town manager's recommendation, created an approximately one million dollar allocation of funds to pay for the planning of a new town hall slash school administration building to be presented at the annual town meeting in two thousand and twenty. The town voted to approve this plan back in June of two thousand and twenty despite the fact that this building is estimated to cost approximately thirty million dollars to construct. I specifically remember at one of the Board of Selectmen meetings that took place before the coronavirus shutdown, a school committee member stood up and said something to the effect of, I would love to have a new school administration building. However, I believe all the staff working in the current school administration building would rather work in a tent than have the students attending classrooms in substandard conditions. The Wildwood School in particular is severely lacking and barely meets the requirements of a functioning space for children to learn even without social distancing for coronavirus. We need to take a hard look at why our town management has decided to prioritize a thirty million dollar town hall slash school administration building over fixing the existing problems with our school buildings. Thank you, Ethan Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Smahan. Mr. Bjork, thirty-one.
Emily Irving, forty-three Fiorenza Drive. Since our elementary buildings have already been identified as needing rehab, the results of the HVAC inspection should have come as no surprise to the administration. Why are we not moving our elementary-level students, who are far too young to be effectively learning in a remote fashion, into the high school building where they can be safely taught the critical foundational learnings they need so they can be set up for success in higher grades? Although not ideal in many ways, high school age students are much more likely to succeed with remote learning and can therefore be set up remote until the ventilation issues have been addressed. Last minute, no warning, one hundred percent remote learning is an injustice to our entire youth community. If the HVAC issues with the newer school facilities can be fixed now, why aren't we moving towards hybrid or in-person learning in these buildings, keeping the age and cognitive levels of the students in mind? It's time to think outside of the box and get our children learning. Lisa Cornoyer, eleven Patches Road Lane, Patch, I'm sorry, eleven Patches Pond Lane. No words can truly say how a majority of Wilmington parents feel, but looking on social media, most of us want our kids in school. And I'm sure you won't be able to read some of the comments out loud. But this is what we as parents hear. We hear that the administration wants our kids to go back, but the teachers' union does not. Are you kidding me? Our kids are suffering mentally, physically, socially, and emotionally. Everyone sees that. How can our teachers not be essential workers? That's absolutely crazy to me. As a parent of a daughter that suffers with major anxiety, this is breaking my heart for all of them. You all should be ashamed of yourselves. David Lang, Jr., three Naples Road. Why did it take so long to provide the HEPA filter systems for the district? Are we not providing MERV thirteen filters in the systems already? This should not need to delay the opening of the hybrid schedule. Nicole Otis, Lawrence Street. I am writing to express my disappointment in how the upcoming school year is being implemented. I feel that the emails received, although detailed, are not providing full transparency as to what is going on. If our HVAC study concluded that schools are safe to occupy, why are we still going full remote? I understand some of our schools are not in the best shape and support supplemental equipment purchases to provide better air quality for staff and students. Are staffing issues the real challenge? I feel as parents we are owed a little more information on that subject. Is it possible to get total numbers by each school as to how many teachers will not be returning, whether it be a leave or retirement? We appreciate and support the teachers, but we as parents should understand if our kids will be facing a shortage of teachers in the school they attend. One can assume with less teachers, there'll be less electives offered and larger class sizes when we do return to school for in-person learning. This information would be helpful for parents wondering if the public system is still a good fit for their child, or if they should explore private school options. Lastly, I feel that these kids have missed out on so much over these past six months. I ask that the school committee vote in favor of moving, moving forward with all levels of high school sports. Jennifer Prisco, twenty-two West Street. For the negotiations with WTA regarding an agreement for the reopening, what are the unresolved issues at this point? And where does the WTA, school committee, and superintendent clearly fall on their stance to each issue? Having this unresolved still, when this town is slated to start on Wednesday, has put tremendous stress on all parties involved, and I worry about what this does to children who are caught in the middle of unresolved issues. I think it's important for us to know and understand each side's viewpoint and how there will be plans to support a timely solution that allows students to be in a hybrid or fully onsite model sooner than later. I also think going fully remote for the first month when Wilmington is not considered a high, a high-risk town is doing a disservice to children. Jennifer M., forty Lowell Street. Thank you for choosing full remote at this time. A wise decision. Mariana Callahan, five Quill Run Road. Please advise when we have definite in-person start time. I cannot keep changing work schedules. If there's no place to start, we should know now and not wait until three days before we are planning to start and say, no, we are not starting. Kristin Ferron. The lack of transparency and significant changes is disappointing in terms of the remote versus hybrid in terms of service delivery when we were asked to select our binding choices to what's now being delivered. The FAQs added now shows remote to be synchronous with their assigned teacher for the length of a typical school day every day schools in session. Including, the full remote model includes minimal parent involvement depending on age and/or unique needs of the child. While hybrid only has access to their teachers for instruction and access support two-point-five days, on the, on their at-home remote days, they will not have access to the teachers as they will be teaching the opposite cohort. Parents and students at home are on their own these days without access to support. This does not provide equal FAPE opportunity across all students, giving certain groups greater teacher instruction and teacher access. All cohorts, all cohorts should have equal synchronous and asynchronous time, exception being high-needs and IEP students. Carla Lentile, five Tacoma Drive. I want to say that I am frustrated and disappointed with the situation our children have been put in. The students of Wilmington have lost over five months of learning and don't know if they ever will get up, get caught up with these extended delays. Is what is going on in Wilmington the same as what happened in Andover, which was deemed illegal by the way? How are these sudden, how are these sudden leave of absence requests not considered an illegal work stoppage, similar to the actions taken in Andover? Does the Wilmington School Committee or Wilmington Town officials have the legal right to bring this issue to court like they did in Andover? Can someone please explain why every other surrounding town is or will be in school in some sort of physical capacity and Wilmington, Wilmington cannot seem to get their act together? How is it that private schools and daycares, including those in Wilmington, who are required to follow the same DESE guidelines, are able to be open full-time in-person, but we cannot? Are you telling me that every parent, student, teacher, and administrator is somehow magically not susceptible to contracting this virus in a private school or daycare center? I understand that it is not every teacher that is fighting being physically back in school, but they all need to come together and realize the harm they are causing the students. They are falling behind academically and need consistency and to be in class. It stopped being about the kids a long time ago. The emotional and social harm that these children are dealing with is unprecedented. The HVAC passed, filters are on order, and the overall case numbers and positive test rate is steadily declining, and even the governor indicated that towns that were deemed either white or green according to their COVID case map should be in school. The families of Wilmington need to be put first, not the few members of the union that are playing hardball with their lives. Why should we pay our property taxes if the teachers are not fulfilling their contractual obligation to educate our children? We should be given credits on our taxes so we can use that money to pay for private education. If there are teachers with underlying conditions that do not feel comfortable being physically in class with their students, let them teach remotely and teach those that have chosen to be fully remote. I feel that this game was the plan all along to delay the start, and if that is the case, shame on all of those involved. Thank you, and hope we can get all these kids back in school soon. Allison Sisowski, seven Chisholm Way. On reading Dr. Brand's email sent to parents and guardians last week, we are deeply concerned, not only for the education of our child, but for all the children in Wilmington. We are also troubled that less than a week before school is supposed to begin, we are just now being informed that there are potential additional delays, concerns with buildings, and that our children haven't received assignments of teachers or additional information for us to prepare for the school year. Since March, we have known that COVID nineteen is going to have an impact on our schools and learning. Personally, for our son, this situation has been detrimental to his learning and development. As a child with a high-needs IEP and multiple special needs, his progress has been further delayed at a critical age, and we are extremely concerned that this will impact him and other children in the school system with special needs for the long term. While we appreciate the multiple challenges, guidelines, and best attempts of educators, it is not enough. Our children deserve an education that will prepare them for their next challenge, an education that taxpayers fund, and currently, we are failing them. Our family asks that the school committee, school administration, unions, and other parties come together to solve this as soon as possible so that our kids can get back to school and receive the fundamentals they need to thrive. That is it.
Thank you. Okay, back to correspondence. We received an email and asked to read that, so I, MG, do you want to read that or you want me to read that? I'll read it, I'll read it. This was sent by Christine Nally. Although I was disappointed with the district's decision to roll out full remote as of September sixteenth, I would like to publicly state that I'm still hopeful that our children will be given the opportunity to participate in the hybrid model that many within our community have worked so diligently on throughout these last few months.
Are you, are you still public comments going?
Well, I, I know that.
Good job, Mr. Wood.
Sorry. The hybrid model allows our children to safely develop face-to-face relationships with teacher-staff and, more importantly, their peers. No one is denying that in-school learning will be different with smaller class sizes, wearing of masks, and many other safety protocols that have been so thoughtfully put into place. Let's give our children a say. Let's teach the children in person so they desire within the safety protocols developed. This is a lonely time for many youth. Sometimes we need to ask ourselves what is more a danger here, the virus or the lack of socialization for our children, which often results in raised levels of anxiety and/or depression. Our district has diligently educated families over the past few years on the increased levels of such mental, mental illness long before COVID nineteen was a concern. I hope the district will continue to support mental wellness for all families. Full remote, hybrid A or hybrid B, whichever model each of our Wilmington families chose is a personal one. The goal here is to educate our children. The time is here, let's get this done. Thank you for your time and dedication. All right, any other correspondence, Mrs. Burns?
No, this evening.
Um, okay. So, um, we did, I know that there had been some talk last time about a forum. Have you given that any thought, Dr. Brand, about when something like that might happen?
It still continues to be something that I think would be helpful for the community. And I think that we could take a look at a possible date in the near, the next couple of days. I think we, there's some pieces still that are falling into place in terms of some logistics, you know, lunch and some, some other things, and so we'll take a look and get something scheduled in the very near future.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay. Yes, oh, Mr. Reger.
Sorry, guys, I did contact Mary Palin just for clarification, and while kids are in the high school during the, during their in-person days, lunch will be served and meals will be given out similarly on Tuesdays and Thursdays. If families can't get there, they can, we have delivered them as well, so I just wanted to be aware of that. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, future school committee dates, our next meeting is September thirtieth. It is a regular session meeting at seven PM, hopefully in this space. If that goes well. Someone who submitted a comment? Oh, okay. So, Mr. Mallon, so we read his comment, but if you'd like to reread his comment, that's Sorry, Ken, I didn't, I didn't know what you were saying. Someone who submitted a comment? Oh, Brent, Mr. Mallon, so we read his comment, but if you'd like to reread his comment, that's fine. Oh, that's me.
Yeah, no, I, I kind of adjusted it a little bit. I didn't, I was having difficulty earlier getting on, but, so I just wanted to say, I mean, we appreciate the work that we've heard about this summer and that the staff's been doing. It feels like there's been a ton of work going on, but no one really driving the ship. So I wanted to say that I echo a lot of what, I think Melissa was the first speaker, said in her public comment, that the transparency has been extremely disappointing. In addition, the utilization of our tax resources has been inefficient and wasted with, you know, little result. We continue to hear about all the planning and research and facts and science that all these decisions are being based on and all at the hopeful well-being of our kids, but our elementary school kids should not be subject to just such lack of planning and execution. If I've kind of learned anything as a parent, it's, it's, kids learn the most from watching and absorbing what others do, and all as our current plan is showing them how to do is take two steps backward and one step forward when it really should be the opposite. I know if we just, I know I hear all this bad press about the teachers, but I feel like if you just let the teachers and principals run the show and, and get everyone else out of the way, we probably wouldn't be in this situation. It's our job to put the kids first, and not having a plan months in, in advance is just extremely disappointing. My son is supposed to start kindergarten and he's been excited all summer talking about it and, and, and ready to go, and I've continued to have to just let him down at every turn. And I really don't have answers to, to give him on, on excuses. I've kind of ran out of excuses and I've had to start kind of letting him down and telling the truth and let him know that his delay is, is, is based on a bunch of administrators just not doing the job. I mean, the, the excuses you can, you can make all day long and kind of just pat yourself on the back, but, and I've watched multiple businesses put together plans that they had to do to get open for the state and, and do it quickly and efficiently and kind of make small adjustments as they've, as they've gone and they were, and they were done in a couple of weeks. To have the whole summer to get ready and, and, and not be, and, and not have just created a plan that you executed and then just made changes is just astonishing. I mean, I'm extremely let down at the options that you guys have provided for, to work, and working parents in general, but to working parents, which are non-existent. I think a public comment was read earlier about it not even being mentioned in any of the communication that you've sent out. We should be flexible. We should be flexible and accommodating to the parents' requests instead of, we have this military approach to five-year-olds being mandated to be live on Google in order to be considered present. To me, that's like astonishing. Now they can't just, they can't just do the work remotely for the first month. They must show their face on a screen a few times a day or they're going to be absent. So, you know, most five-year-old childrens don't even have the skills needed to even understand communication via a conference. And they don't respect people the same way that they would in person. You know, that personal connection is lost and just chips away at their soul. And, and, and you guys want to mandate, I was told today by the principal that they have to, have to be on Zoom or they're absent, and I can't just work with them to get his work done and submitted just for the first four weeks, which is leaving me, I scrambled to come up with a plan to accommodate the last change that you guys made last minute. And then you made another one again on the last minute. And now I have, I'm out of options and, and my daycare is not going to teach my kid a, a daycare form. So, it's just, you know, we continue to, so you want to push, you know, devices constantly on the kids, knowing it's like the leading cause of mental health issues and, and not having put any thought into our approach into being outside, like I think another caller mentioned, using the fall, having class outside, all the places where COVID really doesn't exist, right? Outside, we know it dies 99% of the time in direct sunlight, like stuff that's actually based on science and facts. Uh, but then at the same time, you guys are just cool with approving sports because, you know, God forbid we lose our sports, right? But you make all these decisions to try to protect kids, but then you tell them to go suck each other's faces, play sports, and get covered in germs, and then bring them around the school anyway. So it's like, what's all the, all the work you did doesn't, doesn't really pay off. I mean, we should have an, we should have an approved plan that was done in July and you tweaked it now if you needed. Um, we should be making decisions based on facts, not feelings and politics, which it seems like you guys are doing. I mean, I'm a, I'm a licensed contractor. I've been doing commercial construction for...
It's actually five minutes and I didn't have a way to communicate that to you. I think Mr. Lord tried to send you a message. Um, and so I, we did read your comment earlier and then you were able to make additional comments just now. So thank you very much for your participation. Um, so someone asked me today, when public comments are made, what do we do? And so I was talking through how it helps us make decisions, how obviously we, we listen to it. Obviously, we all have children in schools and are advocating, um, as well. And I, um, I, I do appreciate people's participation. And I would also, in addition to public comment, which is certainly a time to share your thoughts and your comment, all of us are very open to receiving emails. I have not been inundated. I've gotten some and I've gotten some phone calls. Has anyone been inundated with emails? So feel free to reach out. It's just our first, first name dot last name at wpsk12.com. And many of us are happy to schedule phone calls and talk through some of the pieces that we can share with you, um, and some of, and some of the processes, so. All right, um, I think that is it. Is there anything else before we adjourn? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Bjork, thank you, seconded by Mr. Fenelly. All in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. Um, we do wish a wonderful first day to all the students and teachers and administrators tomorrow in Wilmington, and we will see you on the 30th.